Live here, hold on a second. Hey folks, we're live and I am actually putting this interview I have with Mr. Tatman right here on Facebook too, so I'm going to tag him with it. I didn't, the reason, if you're wondering why I didn't quite do it ahead of time is because sometimes people will see this and they'll click on it and there's nobody there and it's like, oh, nothing's happening. So I didn't want to do that to them. It is, so you're tagged on Facebook with that. We have three visitors already. Hey, everybody, welcome to Zenny sixty-two on YouTube. And we'll just start out of respect for Marshawn's time. Hey, first of all, great to have you because the last time I had you on, it was really cool because of the way that we met.
Right, at Pachisios.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Pachizos, yeah, yeah. That was, that was, that was interesting because I think your campaign manager knew me, right?
Right, exactly right.
Yeah, and I was inside Pachizos, which is a great place, folks, by the way. If you're in Oakland, particularly if you're in Adams Point, please order for takeout from one eight 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 Coffee and Pachizos, they're right next door to each other. One eight eight Coffee is the coffee organization that's on Grand Avenue, just about, I would say, twenty-seven feet away from the intersection of Grand Avenue and Parkview Terrace. Pachizos is the famous restaurant right on the corner, great food, fantastic buffet. It was during a particular buffet session that I ran, I met Mr. Tatman, who I now call my friend Marshawn. And that was a lot of fun. So anybody watching knows the drill. You have any questions, you can put them in on the stick, the chat bar on my right. Or if you are using mobile, it's on your, the bottom of this, my face is at the top like this. If you can see here, okay? And then if you scroll all the way down to the bottom, right there, right, that. Trying to get so that it lines up and gets the contrast out. But you see my face at the bottom, that is where you can put your comments. See how I'm echoing that? See that? Look, you see that? But see that? Yeah, there, okay? So there we go. Pretty cool. All right. Marshawn, man, first of all, how are you doing through this worldwide pandemic? This incredible situation that we are all suffering through at the same time?
Cabin fever, they need to say the least. Trapped in a house, can't go nowhere. I am a central worker, so when I am on assignment, I'm out and about in the community. But besides that, the family is just adhering to the guidelines so we can hit that curve and then move beyond this point. So that's key. Taking to the script, following the guidelines, making sure everybody's safe so we can get far beyond this. But it's kind of frozen time on everything, so good to hear from you, my friend.
Yeah, great to hear from you as well. Hey, so last time we talked, and that, that time, you actually were running for mayor of Oakland. And you had what I, what I would call a breakout campaign because you came from being unknown to not only known, but, but well-regarded as an up-and-coming elected official candidate and political. You got it.
It was a bunch of hard words. Like I, I like to say this old joke, I went through a bunch of shoe bottoms with that campaign. My shoe shop, man, still getting paid on repairing some of those grips I walked over, man, to, to become known. But it was a great campaign.
I, I'm curious, what did you learn about yourself in, in going, doing that? In running for Oakland City Mayor, the mayor election, Oakland running for office in Oakland as the mayor, for, to be the mayor, excuse me. What did you learn from all of that?
That you have to be resilient in politics and similar to sports. I played cornerback for the University of Tulsa. Sometimes if something don't go your way, you have to turn a page in the report or you're going to find yourself getting stuck on something that didn't go well, and there's no progress in that. So I, I learned how to be resilient. And I also learned that you cannot run a campaign without financial resources.
That, that's, that's for certain. It was, so you, what made the, what gave you the, well, before I ask that question, let me answer this question. What was it that you learned about Oakland during that that you didn't know before?
Oh, I think, do I want to touch on that? Oakland is a, is an established political system that is very important to people to know who you are in the political world and for you to know who those people are as well. As you mentioned, I came out of nowhere and I had raised reviews and I ran a pretty good campaign. But at the same time, with me jumping from nowhere into a citywide race like the mayor of Oakland race, really needing to have your contacts well-known so you can get all the support needed to win a race like that.
And how, how did you? What, as was the moment where you said, okay, I'm going to run again, but this time I'm going to run, you know, in District Seven. Why did you choose to do that as opposed to, well? We have other people considering at-large, Rebecca Kaplan is our current and very good at-large city council representative. But I'm curious, why did you choose to run again and then why District Seven?
Well, I'm from District Seven, born and raised, still well there. I went to high school in District Seven, spent a lot of time growing up in District Seven. Now, I've mentioned this before, my dad is a City of Oakland employee with over forty-two years under his belt of recreation. But plenty of that time he spent in District Seven, I worked there. Oh, District Seven is near and dear to my heart. Also, out of high school, I interned for Larry Reed. I was once his intern, so, you know, after twenty-three years under the helm, he announced retirement. It opened up the race and I fell in love at the right time. Now, the reason why I didn't go at large is because, I mean, like I mentioned with the citywide race, you need the financial resources to cover the whole city. Did I cover the whole city in my mayor run? I did multiple times. But I felt this race was more appropriate for me. This race was more passionate to me. And I felt that there's a lot of changes that need to happen in District Seven to, to move that entire neighborhood forward.
How would you say, I mean, what was, when you, when you decided to do it? Was there some particular thing that happened that some trigger where you said, aside from maybe just Larry retiring, where you thought, okay, I can do this now?
Multiple things happened. One, Larry Reed announced his retirement. It's hard, very hard, as I found out, to run against that encounter. They had a contact, they had a financial resources. And they know the ins and outs of whatever seat that they're re-renting for. When he decided to retire, that opened up the door for me. And a lot of stuff happened from that mayor race into now that put me in a better position to run these races. For instance, after the mayor race, I was promoted at my job and I ran the entire homeless program, Outreach Housing Center, Alameda. On top of that, I actually ran an emergency winter warming shelter. So those were newly transformed abilities, new roles in which I was working with the organization I was working with, plus with the city, Alameda. And we all know that I used to house people in Oakland, Salley Andrew, Alameda, Haver, already. But this just added more. And thinking September, I actually left the organization I was with. Now I'm the executive, government affairs manager for the San Francisco Moran Food Bank. So I'm doing a lot of work out there. We work on a lot of state legislation, federal legislation. We do a lot of lobbying in Sacramento. And I'm not just talking about corporate interest lobbying. I'm talking about lobbying that's on benefit of the people. Better policy being created, that's equitable. Things that we need as a community, you need somebody who will be there to fight for that. So since that mayor race, now I done made a lot of new relationships from city supervisors, county supervisors in San Francisco and Moran County. Ran across the governor a few times, he was with Mayor Breed today with the pop-up, emergency pop-up pantry I'm running. So a lot, a lot has changed and it gives that time for me to come back out and state the claim that what's mine.
What would you say are the key issues right now in District Seven in Oakland?
So outside of COVID nineteen, which is the number one issue, and the thing I learned about politics, you have to be able to adjust your issues with your priorities to what's now. If you asked me this question a few weeks ago, I probably would have said homelessness, which is my number one pathfinding when I was running for mayor. Why? Because I seen it firsthand, I was on the front line. I housed nearly two hundred families in gay temporary shelters to over six hundred individuals. So we're looking at around eight hundred people plus that I either help with permanent housing or giving them temporary shelter. So homelessness is always first and foremost, especially with the point in time count where we've seen an increase within Oakland, in which I was a part of that count at five in the morning. Of course, we have to focus on equity, so just like the mayor race, it's gonna be the same thing. Equitable economic development, so everybody can get a piece of the pie. In order to move a community forward, we need people in that community to be active, to be involved. In order, in order for them to be active and involved, you've got to get them my opportunity. People who typically don't work is working and keeping their time occupied, doing something productive. Two, they don't have to go out there and be a part of the hustle and bustle where you have a bunch of free time and you're out there doing things that you shouldn't. Now you're actually making a living and making money for each of your families. And three, it does something else. It, it us lifts the spirit of a community that's been historically left out when it comes to certain decisions being made throughout the city. So we have to focus on that. And of course, crime. And I'm talking about homicide, and I'm talking about violent crime. As you know, I'm a certified domestic violence counselor as well. So reducing crime is another good thing for me, especially being somebody who lost family members in the city of Oakland due to gun violence, lost friends due to gun violence, who've seen people getting hurt due to the violent crimes. Property crime is one of them. So those will be my three issues outside of the COVID nineteen. But right now, I put everything to a halt, even campaigning because I haven't figured out how to campaign and create things. I mean, we can get on the Facebook, social media, update posts and do that. And that's what I've been doing and sharing a bunch of resources and what's going on in the world. But right now, my prime focus is hitting the curve with the COVID nineteen and then moving beyond this point so we can get back to our day-to-day lives.
Do you think, let me ask this another way. Talk about the city's response to COVID nineteen and how it's going from your perspective.
Well, it hit everybody kind of hard and everybody reacted a little deafening as far as being faster we are. And what I mean by that is the city of Oakland is responding to the COVID nineteen. Mayor Shaft is doing our virtual town hall weekly. But could we have reacted a little faster? Of course we should have, and that's for every city in the state of California. But I don't think we just saw that it hit us like this. I mean, I was in New York in February, and New York is the epic center in America for the COVID nineteen. And I was just there February twenty-fourth. So of course I was protective when I was fighting and stuff, had all my N ninety-five and gloves, sterilized my whole area on the air, finding me and my wife. But I don't think we expected this to hit high and hit. So did it catch us off guard? It definitely touched us, caught us off guard. Now, what that tells me, we need to do more practice towards emergency preparedness. Especially with me coming back into this political world where I came from, like I mentioned. I ran the emergency winter warming shelter, I'm running an emergency pop-up pantry right now. So we always have to be prepared for these moments and activate our, our operational center immediately as soon as something like this happens, even outside of guidelines that's not even announced yet. We do just should have took the initiative, then what we need to do, declare a state of emergency so we can open ourselves up to emergency refunding and got our emergency operation center going. But we learned from this, and the Bay Area in general is running very hard right now with the number of deaths in the Bay Area due to COVID nineteen. And all the counties and residents in cities that are affected and inspected by this virus.
Hey, so shifting gears for a bit, but still talking about the campaign. You're running against a crowded field of not one, not two, not three, but seven candidates. Yeah, Marcy Hodge, Ken Houston, Bishop Bob Jackson, Trevor Reed, the current incumbent's daughter, Tyrone Stevenson, and then there's you. What is it that sets you apart from the other candidates in this field?
And I had an issue in Oakland, and I grew up in Oakland, but I managed to make a good living for myself coming from these issues. I think when it comes to this race and D seven, we need somebody who lived these experiences, but is actually on the frontline right now and on the back end, because a lot of my work right now outside of the COVID nineteen is on the back end, policy lobbying. We need somebody with those relationships that can come in and hit the ground running. I understand that we have Larry Reed's daughter in this race. But again, being the council's granddaughter, and he's been in that seat for twenty-three years. Have you really lived through these issues? Bishop Bob Jackson, same thing, you know, biggest bishop, probably the biggest in the Bay Area, actual Godfather. But you being behind a home team for how many years? Have you really lived through these issues? Do you know policies? So I come with that perspective and that experience. I know policy, I lived through these issues. I completed highest level of schooling. I have over a decade of working on policy. And everywhere I go, my results speak for themselves. So for somebody who don't know much about me, they can Google me or follow me and they can see that. Everything I touch, and I hate to say it, and I don't want to toot my horn, but it does turn into gold. And that's what I plan on doing with District Seven. I plan on making District Seven a golden goose egg, had to be the economic driver of the entire East Oakland. So, and not just East Oakland, Oakland in general.
Where would you, or how would you assess District Seven's affordable housing need versus what has been or not? How would you assess where District Seven is in terms of housing and, and the homeless?
Well, I know this and it's a fact. The entire Oakland having hit the mark when it comes to the mark that's, that's been set forth by the state of California when it comes to building affordable housing. East Oakland is nowhere near that mark. I can count on my hand, probably need a few extra fingers, how many affordable houses we're going to see having in Oakland compared to the homeless amount of people we have in East Oakland. And let's not even just speak on the homeless, let's just speak on people living paycheck to paycheck that severely affected by the COVID nineteen and all the closures right now where we're seeing historic numbers south unemployment. So to be frank, we don't have enough affordable housing, especially compared to what's being built right now. And I think the focus needs to shift from market rate housing to affordable housing. Now, I understand a little something, because you know, I am the, sit on a budget commission as a commissioner. I understand affordable housing don't make the city a lot of money as opposed to market rate housing. But as we're saying now, sometimes, and Governor Nielsen did it, did the correct thing by shutting down California. Because sometimes it's not about money. That capitalistic mentality, I understand it brings in the dollars, but sometimes we need to care about the people more. And right now, that's not being done. Any new building that goes up in Oakland should be affordable housing. Any existing property that's vacant, especially been vacant for four or six months, because we know that when they build these units, a lot of them stay vacant. That after a certain amount of time, we need to work out a deal with the developers to convert some of those to affordable housing, below market rate housing, especially when you have property for rent. We're generating income for them that they wasn't seeing, and now we keep off the streets. Or we creating tiers. If somebody can afford below market, because we know below market and affordable housing is different. Affordable housing is based on income. Below market is, is lower than at, of, of market. So the one bare room, affordable housing can be seven hundred, even that's based off your income. At market can be two thousand, but below market can be fifteen. We need to open up those avenues for people who can afford a little bit more to move on to below market. And at the same time, it'll open up affordable housing for people who really need it.
Another problem that Oakland has faced is a rash of smashing grabs, robberies all over the city. I've been impacted, a number of friends of mine have been impacted. I had, when I came back last fall, I rented a car, which I put in my garage. Then we took the car out, just went to the Raiders game, then came back, took my godparents back home, went to the alley just for, really to have some of their classic fried chicken. And I was only there for forty minutes, I came out, smash, and it was nothing in the car, nothing. So I took, how do we, yeah, what, yeah, please, how do we deal with this problem?
So first, let me share my story.
Yes, sir.
And we're going to take it back to the mayor race. And I, before the election, I was campaigning in downtown Oakland and I parked on the side of the stadium, right there on, what, Seventeenth or Sixteenth. I was campaigning and within twenty minutes came back to my car to get some more literature. And my car was busted open, the day before the elections, November fifth, I never could get there. So it impacted me as well, and I didn't have nothing in the car but literature, campaign stuff. So how do we change this dramatically? Now, the question is, do we want more police enforcement, would that really help? I guarantee they won't be able to hit every spot. Do we use our community members to report issues or suspicious activity? I'm a little bit reluctant on that because now people can be looked upon as a criminal or be looked upon as somebody who's up to no good and, and it can risk them harm if the police is caught on them and they not even doing that. So how can we address this issue? I think opportunity is to keep things to address this issue. Let's find out the reasons why people doing smashing grabs, and we already know this. They call it a lick, it's an easy come, it's a quick lick. What they do with the stuff they get, they sell it. They sell it because they need money for that reason. So let's create a hotline, and I floated this idea around during the mayor race, but I didn't speak too much on it. Let's create a hotline, get with a bunch of businesses who got day-ready work, day laborers, and create this hotline through the city where people can call in and say they need some money and pick up work and get paid on day of. We see a lot of ride-share companies doing this now where they moving away from the traditional two-week paychecks to the daily paycheck. So let's figure out how we can create this citywide where we can get a bunch of businesses to partner up with us so we can create this opportunity so we can keep people busy, keep money in their pockets so they won't have to go out there and hit those licks. Now, I'm from, I'm from Oakland, I'm from, from the hood, so I know what it is out there. And I, I kind of got a sense of why people do certain stuff that they do. So let's fix it at the core so we can eliminate that need to do a smashing grab. And that's my take on it, is opportunity. A lot of this stuff, crime, smashing grabs, all of it's going to come back to having opportunities. Let me give you an example. I know people who's coming home from jail, being incarcerated, who can't get work, can't even get housing. All that's doing is setting them up to repeat the same things that they went in jail for because they have no hope, they have no choices. We need to make sure people have choices. And as a council member, I make sure people have choices. And if not, people can hold me accountable. And I will always be in the community, making sure that people have their choices.
And we're on with Marshawn Tatman, who's running for Oakland City Council, District Seven. And Marshawn, another problem that we've had for some time has to do with our gigantic pension system gains. And what is your thought about how to tackle this problem going forward?
Good question, Zenny. Like I mentioned, alerted you earlier, I sit on a budget commission as a commissioner. So the information I was imprisoned to during the mayor race, I can actually see it now. And what I've seen is a lot of these unfunded liabilities, is what they're called, pensions, is they don't have a funding source that's sustainable to pay out for these pensions. So that's why we see the balloon pensions, struggling to find resources to cover them. We need to create more economic growth as a city and put our expenditures in check. We need to slow down on the spending and make sure we can cut the checks. By cutting the checks, I mean, we need to create more economic opportunities. Now, by doing that, we can dedicate funds, our percentage of that for forty unfunded liabilities so that always be a guarantee for the fund there. The problem that the city experienced, that the funding that they use for payments is not guaranteed. So they scrambling every two years, because Oakland is on a biennial, a biannual budget, to cover these expenses. So we need to put something in place to make sure that there's always something to cover these pensions. And this is when I'm going to rewind it back to creating economic development opportunities for a sector, a community, a portion of the city that's not being accounted for as economic drivers. So I feel if we can get this portion of the city online so they can create opportunities, we can create a fund and pay straight into this unfunded liability, the pension. Now, when it comes to pensions, I'm quite sure that every new hire to numbers is not as high as say, somebody who came on for the city twenty years ago. So we need to figure out agreement with the young ones, with the employers, what should that number be moving forward that's sustainable? I'm dead when it comes to sustainability, that's one of my strong points, economic sustainability. Yeah, that's what I focused on when I got my masters. I feel we can put a plan in place to make sure that these pensions is covered and make sure that number twenty years down the line, something that we don't see right now, is accounted for. And what else we can do, we can create models that determine what our payout would be twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years down the line. Because the city is never over with. And I think the problem, part of the problem was, they wasn't creating these models back when these pensions was being created to see what it'd look like twenty years down the line. With economics, you always want to look at least twenty to thirty years down the line, never five or ten, that's short term. With that short thought, making that short mindset. With that short thought uh thinking, that short mindset, you gonna get put in situations like we're seeing right now.
We recently, we had and we've continued to have problems with warehouses, abandoned warehouses being used to live in. And on two occasions, these structures have been the focus of arson fires in or just simply mistaken fires that were manslaughter, you know? Uh what do we do about this problem? And 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 or, or have we addressed it and that's why we haven't heard about it? This is your.
This is big, Jenny, because we're thinking about bullshit warehouse.
Yes, sir, yeah.
That killed over thirty something people because.
Yeah, thirty six.
People was living in a, yeah, people was living in a warehouse that wasn't safe to live in. We need to get everything up to code. Look, I have no problem with creating different uh untraditional housing opportunities for people. But when we create these opportunities, first the city need to know about them, the city need to inspect them, the city need to make sure they up to code. And we can't just uh be be uh reactive. We need to be taught about the warehouse, let the city know about it. So I, I, I feel and to be honest with you, the city dropped the ball on that and as a result, thirty six souls was lost that we had never did that. So we need to make sure that first these uh warehouses are identified, being uh uh living quarters for people. We need to get inspected in here to see exactly what's going on. Now, I know there's a bunch of these that still out there and I'm not just saying go and red tag them all and kick people out because now we dealing with more people that's becoming homeless. But if this the case, we need to work with uh building owners, property managers at the city. Help them get up the code. If we need to put a sprinkler system in the building and they don't have the capital to do it, the city need to have some capital available, no interest loans, uh low interest loans, uh capital funding programs that'll make this possible. And let's stop letting the owners off the hook as well. And let's go after the people who led this happen where we wasting lives at the same time. By not reporting to the city that this abandoned warehouse is being lived in with a lot of occupants. And I'm not just talking about one or five, uh twenty plus.
Oakland has not had a black police chief since two thousand eleven. And since two thousand fourteen, it has had only one black chief administrative officer either permanent or interim. What's going on with a city that was once known for giving qualified African Americans jobs at the top? Just last week, Marquesia Smith, who many, including council members, regarded as the person who should be the next chief administrative officer, was passed over by Oklahoma Mayor Larry Schaaf for Edward Reskin, who is a assistant city administrator, who was literally rescued by the mayor after being fired from his job, his eight year long job as the Metropolitan Transportation Authority Director for the city of San Francisco. And I want to add on a personal note, this is nothing personally against Ed, but the situation is before us and it must be talked about. What should be done in your, in your view? Not just, not so much about CFO specifically, but about just this seemingly constant passing over of African American talent. You know, Danielle Offlaw left Oakland.
Right, 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 yeah. Right, Jenny, and you can put me in the same boat. Uh I'm qualified, I took my time with the San Francisco because they value it a lot more. And it's just quite frankly, uh I left Oakland because I felt that Oakland in me, which we all know that's untrue. I feel this slant squarely on a merit. I have a good relationship with Mayor Schaaf, uh she didn't want to put me on a budget commission. So I think this land squarely on her and she need to create equitable opportunities and and believe in this African American leader. Uh because we see what's happening, especially with Ed, with Danielle Offlaw being outlook uh overpassed. She went up to Portland, now she a police chief up there, uh correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, she's in Philadelphia now.
Philadelphia police, she correct, correct, correct. She left Oakland, very talented person and speak about uh Ed being fired in San Francisco.
Oh, and by the way, uh at Zenny sixty two media broke the story, Marquesia Smith left Oakland last week.
Okay.
Did she got passed over, so she departed without ceremony, without announcement, just I got a tip.
Right.
They went for it immediately, uh from a source who's been very good in terms of accuracy. Um left, so ostensibly for Stockton, but no one quite knows. And the way the city handles things, like when Mark Sawicki left after being the department, the economic development head uh for four and a half years, there was no announcement that he left, he just left and suddenly there was a new hire um in Allison Dreless, I believe her last name is, I think I've mispronounced her name, but I digress. Uh but there was, there was announcement about her hiring, but there was no announcement about the release of Mark Sawicki. So. And so.
And that's happening, uh it's what, it's a process, I mean looking at the interim chief, uh who was grounded in controversy in San Mateo. I think she left San Francisco because of the controversy out there with, with uh big story with some of the detectives and officers out there planting drugs on people under her wife. And you have that big scandal out there uh with the labs in San Francisco where they were stealing drugs or using drugs from the lab. That was under her wives, she went to San Mateo, now she in Oakland. So I think we need to make better decisions when it comes to uh bringing people in Oakland and we also need to respect the people who's been in Oakland and worked their self up to the, the change to put theirself in position for these type of promotions and these investments and careers. And that's not being done right now. Oakland, we can say Oakland has somewhat of a transparency problem when it comes to personnel issues. Uh and that's being understated. So we just need to put fine focus on equity, making sure we had a most qualified person in our position, not based off of race, our color, creed, nationality, but off the skill and experience. And if we look at that, I'm quite sure we can get some more African Americans in there. Because me being an African American, I know what skills I have and everything I touch, see those skills I have. But I left my home city because it wasn't a faith in touch, see those skills I have. But I left my home city because it wasn't a faith in me, study still. That's another reason why I'm coming back for the D seven race, because I got a lot to prove and I'm gonna show people that I'm capable, I'm ready. I had the skills to, to lead a city, to lead a district and we gonna turn some things around. And that's just that.
And before, before we close, uh with terms of sports, what's your opinion or position, excuse me, on the Coliseum and its future and the A's at Howard Terminal?
So let's, let's dig, dig, dig into this. During my mayor race, I floated the idea of the Hagen Burger tourist uh. I traveled, Jenny, like I said, I was in New York before they became an epic center of COVID nineteen. Thank God that I wasn't affected if this virus. Everywhere I go, when you leave the airport, it's very scenic. If I'm on a vacation, I wanna come to this city and spend my money. When you leave Oakland Airport, that's not the case. And let's rewind it back to two thousand three, uh confirmed by a staffer in one of the council member office that In-N-Out over there, the highest grossing restaurant in Oakland was my idea back in two thousand and three. I'm on record saying that, uh they didn't even know what it was. That's me, so I already started, uh.
That's a good restaurant, man, thanks.
Right, right, so we need to redevelop the entire Hagen Burger, we need to dip into the tourist dollars. San Francisco still everything, they stole the Warriors, they stole me, uh but we need to steal as well. And not malicious, but let's dip into that billion dollar tourist industry and make Hagen Burger the spot to come to with uh different theme villages. You know, we got the entertainment village over there, we can have a, a taste of Oakland village over there. We can have a realistic Chinatown over there, I mean four twenty, marijuana is legal. We can have Little Amsterdam over there, we can create small little villages, like twenty of them that can produce revenue for the city. If one of these villages go down, we got nineteen more that can pick up the slack. Now, how does that look like? Uh let's look at uh across the street from City Hall, uh the, the, the little eatery places over there, uh City Walk, whatever, so I can't think of the right name, you caught me off guard with this one. But we can duplicate that, we can make this area into a, a, a tourist area for visitors. And we can redevelop, we can keep the, the Oracle Arena there, we can do concerts, uh and we can make this a spot that the A's wouldn't wanna leave from. They wouldn't have to go to power for turn, they don't have to bomb, right? That's, that's one of the reasons why they wanna leave because it just doesn't fit where sports, professional sports is going to. I mean, Las Vegas Raiders, Raiders left Oakland for Vegas, why? Because now they can tap into this market that Oakland should have been tapped into. And I think one of the thing of Roger Goodell, uh why he wanted the Raiders out of Oakland was because Oakland came with a, a plan that they build a stadium and develop around the stadium. And I feel that's a backward approach. We need to develop the area and then build a stadium up within this developed area. That way the revenue is already there and it's not depending on sports revenue.
What about the athletics at, so you're saying that there's a controversy, even though it would seem to be settled by the advance of legislation, but there are people who still believe, and I believe there's a petition out to have the A's at the Coliseum rather than Howard Terminal. Are you behind that or against it?
I'm behind her and the reason why is because Howard Terminal is one of the most polluted pieces of land in Oakland. It's real dangerous over there. And we have seen from the environmental reports once they come out that, I mean, we already seen this, that Howard Terminal is really polluted. I wouldn't want all the residents of Oakland to, to risk their safety by going to a ballpark. I think the Coliseum is the way to go, that area, we should have built it up. But we didn't build it up and that's why the A's wanna leave. They, they almost wanna leave it up and that's why the A's wanna leave. They, they almost wanna leave Oakland, uh good thing we're able to keep them. But I think we should have did more work over there, we had over thirty years to do it and it still looks the same from when I was a little kid, coming from East Oakland, eighty second where I, where I used to live at, riding my bike to the Coliseum. Ain't nothing changed, it's the exact same way. Uh so again, the city dropped the ball, we could have been and built this place up. Then the A's would have probably wanna stay in this area, but since we been, they wanna move to another area and build it up in that area. Which have the, the numbers and not looking at what they gonna do to the community once they leave this community. They been in their entire existence here in Oakland.
If it's found that Las Vegas Stadium is not usable this year, would you favor the Raiders returning even though they broke their lease and said they're out?
No, I'm, I'm like this, Jenny, I love the late uh Raiders, but you burnt us too many times. And like I mentioned earlier, sometimes you just need to turn the page and move on. And I think it's time to move on for the Raiders. Uh we still have a great fan base in Oakland, but I wouldn't mind bringing in another professional team if everything adds up right. Now, will that professional team be successful in Oakland as a dominant league Raiders country? Uh to be determined.
Well, let me, let me understand, so you're saying you favor having another NFL team?
I favor having another NFL team, I'm on record saying this. And it just build up a, a crowd base. I mean, look what happened with the Seattle Supersonics when they went to Oklahoma, the Sundays. Uh I'm in favor for it. And people purging from our market, let's purge from they market. I'm all about making smart moves for the city of Oakland and if it's a smart move, then let's do it. If it's not smart, well, let's not do it, but let's see if it's possible. And you got teams moving around every so often. And I think in a few years, the NFL is gonna expand, it's just my thought. Cause I know they want another team back in St. Louis. Uh and it's an open market that they can come into, uh they can put in, I think the sports team can be up in Portland, uh NFL fan. We might have some crowd people uh where we can put a sports team in Hawaii, who knows? I think uh league might be expanding, I, I don't know this for a fact, but I think I can smell an expansion with the NFL the next several years. I don't know how this COVID nineteen affects that, but NFL always wanna grow, so I can see that happening. And I think Oakland should be considered.
Uh BTS, how about the XFL? BTS, they're forming you, the XFL uh was rejected because the Athletics believed that having the XFL at the Coliseum would conflict with their schedule. And uh that leads me to this question, Marshawn, what, how about, and how, what do you think about the new sports organizations that are growing like Oakland Roots Soccer, Oakland Panthers Indoor Football League?
Right, uh I love them, I love the Roots, uh and I especially love Oakland Panthers. Why? Because my guy Marshawn Lynch has some ownership stake up in that. Uh now, the A's fan is conflicting with their, their schedule. I thought they was moving to Har- Howard Terminal anyway, so why does that matter? I'm a little, uh, I'm a little lost with that.
Good question.
Because if you, if you moving to Howard Terminal, how would that conflict with your schedule? I think they just want that land for themselves. Uh I think the city of Oakland should keep a stake in that land and we shouldn't just sell it off. Now, County Alameda don't do what they do, but I think the city of Oakland, that land is too valuable to, to sell our assets to Oakland. We should keep a stake in it.
In fairness to the A's, so I don't make a mistake, because I do know this, it was with respect to playing, it was last year with respect to playing in twenty twenty. And so they were concerned about scheduling conflicts in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, not so much the future. But Dave Cavall and Scott McKibben had said that they really did try to quite literally look at it from all angles. But they couldn't, they couldn't work out a deal in Berkeley either, so that's what happened.
And I think this is something uh that Oakland should have considered. XFL, what, got eighteen, twelve teams, they definitely don't expand, especially if they can make it beyond this COVID nineteen, which took that season, three games in, so let's not forget that. But I believe XFL, if they are successful, this is like a pilot, pilot point two point O, because we know they did it before and they didn't make it. But they, in order for Vince McMahon to come back with the XFL, he felt it was a need and it was a market there. That's why he doing the two point O version of it. I bet within his plan, he got some teams coming on year four, year five to expand the XFL. At that point, Oakland should have negotiated for that year five, year four expansion by putting a team online. That way the A's is from that property and it don't matter no more. Yeah, Oakland dropped the ball in a lot of cases.
Hey, so in closing, let's shift gears and talk about COVID nineteen. Uh got any advice for people who are living through this? How are you doing through this? Uh how, how's your routine been impacted by all this?
Oh, uh I'm just in the house, like I said, if I'm on assignment, I get to go out. Uh two weeks before last week, I was going out every morning, seeing if I could find a toilet to use. I finally lucked up and found a supply at Target and I was there at eight in the morning, waiting in line to get in.
Wow.
So that's been my routine, was just trying to survive this moment and get passive. But making sure I stick to the guidelines, uh protect myself. I got the mask, I got the gloves, I got the hand sanitizer, or what's left of my hand sanitizer. I'll probably look on a YouTube video, see how I can make more if I can't find it in the next few days. Uh but.
Hey, Witch Hazel, Witch Hazel's not, I recommend Witch Hazel, it's not a perfect substitute, but uh it's. Uh, it's good to clean your hands and, uh? If you can't find it, and also rubbing alcohol, you know, so, um? Yeah. Hey, so Marshawn, stick around, uh, but I want to thank you very, very much. Um, and thank you all for watching. Subscribe to Zenny sixty two on YouTube if you haven't done so already. And bookmark oaklinnewsnow.com. Hey, Marshawn, stick around, don't go anywhere.
Okay.
Thanks, okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Hey, that was good.